Good evening. Welcome to the Long Pooh City Council Meeting. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Lingle. Councilmember Costa.
President.
Councilmember Martner.
President.
Mayor Protem Starbuck.
President.
Mayor John Lynn.
Here. And Councilmember Lingle is on the road to the Northern California Power Agency meeting, representing the city in beautiful Roseville. So, drive safely, Bob. And now if you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And next, it gives me great pleasure to introduce from far away in San Francisco Robbie Turner, who will be talking to us about Nextdoor. As soon as she conquers the computer. I think assistance is on the way. We just said, "She's at this computer thing with neighbors." I said, "Yeah, we just have to go."
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. Beautiful drive down this morning, and I had a nice chance to drive around the city in just beautiful city. I really like it here. So I'm here to talk to you about Nextdoor, which is a social networking site specifically for neighborhoods. And the first thing I'm going to do is actually show you a presentation, or it's like a 30-second or 90-second video that will give you an idea of what Nextdoor is all about, and then I'll give you some more details about how we're going to work with the city.
Have you ever needed to borrow a ladder, find someone to mow your lawn, or learn when local road repairs will wrap up? There are so many ways our neighbors can help us. But these days, most people don't know their neighbors or how best to contact them. It's difficult to ask for help and advice without being a bother. Nextdoor changes all that with free and private neighborhood websites that make it easy for neighbors to connect and talk about the issues that matter. It's an online place where you and your neighbors can ask questions, stay in the know, and exchange local help and advice. Here you can meet your neighbors, get recommendations for local services, and learn about neighborhood events. Whether you want to spread the word about a new park, find an owner for that bookcase in your garage, or be alerted of recent crimes in your area, Nextdoor makes it easy to keep up with everything going on in your neighborhood. All recommendations are organized and archived, so next time you need a trusted dentist or electrician, you can find a great one in seconds. Nextdoor is a secure website where all members must verify that they live in the neighborhood. You can be confident that your communications stay within a trusted environment designed just for you and your neighbors. Getting started is easy. With just a few clicks, you can get up and running with Nextdoor for your neighborhood. As your neighbors join the website, you build a stronger and safer neighborhood. When neighbors start talking, everyone benefits. To get a Nextdoor website for your neighborhood, go to nextdoor.com.
So that gives you a very quick overview of what Nextdoor is all about. And it's about connecting neighbors with each other, and then also connecting the city with those neighbors. We have been in business for about a year and a half now. We are currently used in over 3,700 individual neighborhoods in 48 states plus DC. We work with individual neighborhoods or with cities. So my job is actually work with cities to make sure that every neighborhood in the city has a Nextdoor neighborhood, and that all people within the city can actually join a neighborhood and not be excluded from a neighborhood. We've rolled out citywide in 41 cities. Most of those are here in California. We have a few that, we have like seven or eight of those that are outside California. We have another 25 cities that are rolling out in the next 45 days, and probably about half of those are outside California. So we really focused on California first in the last six months, trying to kind of in our own backyard, make sure that it works and that it works well in all sizes of cities. Okay, so just a real quick why we actually created Nextdoor. We did a lot of research before we actually even started the company. And part of it was we were neighbors. We each live in an area where we didn't know our neighbors. And we were like, was that kind of normal, or is it just really busy lives, or, you know, why don't we know our neighbors, and what is there something we could do about it? In doing some research, we found a lot of information, a lot of books that Robert Putnam had written. He's a Harvard professor. He wrote a book back in 2001, before there really was a lot of internet stuff, talking about social networks in a neighborhood. And he had research that proved that if you have people that know each other in the neighborhood, they watch out for each other, the crime is lower, public health is better in those neighborhoods, and the kids go to school longer, and they have higher test scores. Pew Research has done some follow-up since then. 2009, they did a study. The bad news is, what they found was 29% of residents only know some of their neighbors. So all of us in Nextdoor were kind of at that same, in that 20, less than, not in that 29%, we knew maybe one neighbor or two. The good news is that there were already some online networks, and this is like an email list or a Yahoo group. And those people that already were connecting with their neighbors online knew more than 50% of their neighbors. They were 30% more likely to talk with their neighbors face-to-face, and they also were twice as likely to give and receive support from neighbors. With all of our 3,700 networks that are out there up and running, we found when you get your neighbors talking to each other, great things happen, and community is built. So that's why we're doing Nextdoor. And let me tell you just a little bit about our business model and what it's all about. We have three pieces to Nextdoor. One is connecting neighbors to each other. So this is the ability for the neighbors who don't really know each other to get online and communicate with each other. It can be anything, and my personal neighborhood is things like, "I need a new hairdresser. Has anybody got a recommendation for one?" This last week, we had a really bad week with pets. Somebody's neighbor's dog, her dog died because she walked it along the street, and it drank some water out of the gutter, and it happened to be antifreeze, and it died. So we had a whole long discussion around what do we do about that, and, you know, if you have an accidental spill, what do you do, who do you call? So it's a way that the neighbors can get to know each other and build some trusted relationships with them. I now know neighbors that I never knew before because I've loaned them things. I have, we've gotten an emergency preparedness group going within our neighborhood. So this is a great way to get people to know each other, not only online, but to get them offline and get them face-to-face as well. The second piece is really connecting neighbors to the local government. So this is where the city comes in, and it's encouraging community participation of the residents of the city. What we allow is for the city to actually be able to post out to individual neighborhoods. So each neighborhood has its own private social network, where you have to be verified that you live within that neighborhood to actually be part of it. You cannot be a sex offender. We exclude sex offenders from the database. And then once you're in, people outside that neighborhood can't see the private conversations going on. The city can post in information into the neighborhood, but they can't see what's going on inside the neighborhood. And members can actually respond back to the city. We've had some great experiences where neighbors have started taking care of themselves, instead of relying on the city and treating the city like, "I'm a consumer of your services, so you therefore have to come do things for me." Our first city was Redwood City, and they have a flooding problem when it's high-high tide and torrential rains. They got on, they sent to the two neighborhoods that normally flood. We had to cut back Public Works, so we haven't been there to clean your storm drains. Can you look outside, see if you, if your storm drains are blocked? If they are, can you take the debris off? And oh, by the way, we have sandbags for you at City Hall. Come pick them up. And in those two neighborhoods, some of the people got together and said, "Well, gosh, you know, we could just walk around and clean the gutters off, clean the storm drains off." They did, and the next Monday, when Public Works came in, they're like, "What happened? There was no flooding. Nobody called us at all, all weekend, and we had people on call." So those are the kinds of things where neighbors can actually look out for themselves. The police can actually organize kind of a virtual neighborhood watch. The fire can do emergency preparedness planning with neighbors online and actually get them offline as well. So there's a lot of benefit to the local government and to the neighbors for the city being involved. The neighborhood network is free to the neighbors, and it's free to the city. And the way that we plan to make our business, make our money is through local business advertising. We do not have that piece yet. We are funded right now through venture capital, and we just received our second round of funding, which will take us through the end of 2014. So we have quite a way to, quite a bit of time to actually figure out this model of local business advertising. What we plan to do is actually go to selected cities and actually work with them, work with their chambers of commerce, work with their downtown business districts, work with the Nextdoor neighbors that are there, figure out what the right model is, test it in a couple of cities before we ever roll it out. So we have a good two years before we have to actually have that model actually rolled out nationwide to make money. We do have a piece of the neighbor-to-local business already working, which is the local business recommendations. So as a neighbor, I can ask for a recommendation, and people can give me recommendations. So that piece is already working. What isn't working yet is, are we going to have a directory where businesses pay to be in the directory? Are we going to have coupons? What is it we're going to have? So that's the piece we don't have yet. We have also been endorsed this year by the National Association of Town Watch. So this is the organization that does National Night Out. And so they have recognized that Nextdoor is a great way to organize neighborhoods for Neighborhood Watch, as well as for organizing events like National Night Out. So people are using Nextdoor for a variety of things. And the ones that you heard about in the, in the little 90-second video, tracking down a trustworthy babysitter, getting the word out about a break-in, or discussing emergency response plans. Cities are using Nextdoor right now, these 41 cities, are really working with their neighbors on emergency preparedness, on Neighborhood Watch. They're giving them information about the city, another way to get out events, event calendars, volunteer opportunities. Also, Public Works-type projects, like the one that I was talking about with the, with Redwood City, but road repairs. They can post into an individual neighborhood about a road being closed or all. The, you kind of saw what the site looked like, but this is what it looks like. It's a very simple, easy-to-use system. Individual neighbors can actually just, in the upper right-hand corner, post out information. They can see a map of their neighborhood, and they can actually look at recommendations and buy-sell free items kind of summarized. So cities, what we found, why people are really adopting Nextdoor, is all about bringing back a sense of community to the neighborhoods. And that gets back to Robert Putnam. You know, these are safer neighborhoods. These are, our children go to school longer, they get better grades. This also allows all the neighborhoods to be on one platform, so one computer platform, where you can have easier communication. And we found that the residents love getting information from the city. So they want to know about road repairs. They want to know about police alerts. They want to know about emergency preparedness. So we, our city program includes free private social networks for each city, each neighborhood in the city. And it's a single channel for the city to broadcast news across to the neighborhoods and for the neighbors to actually communicate with each other. And it does include metrics that measure the neighborhood activity and the number of members. So the city can see, you know, you have, we've received a map that has 50 neighborhoods in it. You'd see all 50 of those neighborhoods, how many people are in them, how much are they posting? You wouldn't see the names of every member, and you wouldn't see exactly what they're posting, but you'd see the metrics of them to know kind of how active are those individual neighborhoods. We do have some features that have just rolled out that are really good for the neighbors, and that is a groups functionality. So within a neighborhood, you might have the Neighborhood Watch. So your neighborhood might have 400 houses in it, and you want just your blocks, you can do block parties. So you could have a subgroup within the bigger neighborhood. You can have a public group or a private group. And then the next thing we're rolling out is a citywide group. So this would allow the police to have all the Neighborhood Watch block captains on one group, and then they could be communicating with each other that way. So that's a couple of the features that are coming, or that have just come out, and one that's coming out soon. So we've just received a map of the city with about 50 neighborhoods, and we are in the process of creating those Nextdoor neighborhoods for the city. The next step is that we'd be recruiting what we call founding members. That's the first person that comes into the, first kind of person that starts the neighborhood. Hopefully, that person knows people in the neighborhood, can invite them to join them. And then once we've got about 50% of the founding members up and working with their neighbors, then we actually let the residents know about the availability of Nextdoor. So that's all I had. Is there any questions?
Just to share a little bit, because I was chatting at some length with the city of Galita, and they've been with you guys a little while. And they were talking about the various ways they've promoted this, basically internally through their city billings to people, and I think they had a Valentine's Day rollout on it. So that was their, that was their turnout.
They had a "Love thy neighbor" campaign.
Yeah. But it, they were very enthusiastic about it and said it didn't involve an awful lot of time on behalf of the city. It's as much as you want to put into it.
Right.
You do not have a contract, so we don't have a contract relationship with you. We're, we're just going to work with each other. And you did bring that large box of gold that you're going to give us, right?
(laughing)
Ashley, you want to kick in a couple of questions, since you spent some time on it?
Sure. I don't necessarily have questions because I've looked into this quite a bit. So thank you very much for coming this afternoon. For me, of course, this is something that's exciting because this is very new, and this is a great idea conceptually. I think that the mayor touched on what was important, which is really the commitment on behalf of the city is very minimal. And again, you know, so it's low-cost, high-impact potentially. So, you know, I, of course, would want to go home and be a founding member, and, you know, I love the idea of doing these block parties. I know we've done some National Night Out stuff as well that I think the police department could get on with some of the community members. So for me, I think that it's, you know, something that we can try. There's no guarantee that it's going to work for our community, of course, but I think that just giving it a try and seeing and going from there sort of shows how Long Pooh can be a little more innovative and adaptable than we've been in the past. So that's why I was looking into this. Thank you very much for coming.
I'm going to see if we have any audience questions. This isn't really a discussion item. Anybody want to come up and ask a question? Wow. Nobody? Come on, you're wiggling in your chair. You can come on. Now you've got to come over here to the mic and ask a question, and then she can answer it. And please say your name.
Pam Wall, local resident. You've had a lot of successful cities rolling out. Have you had failures where they just can't get going, won't participate?
I think in every city, we've had successes. And in some of those, we've had not-successful neighborhoods. You know, so every city has successful neighborhoods. Some of them have, some that are just not quite, they just haven't started yet. I mean, it's like, they've only got seven or eight people, and they're trying hard to get them. So what we've been working with several cities on is, how do you engage a neighborhood when they don't feel like they're a neighborhood already? You know, so if they're totally disjointed, they don't feel like a neighborhood. So we've actually had some success with some other, you know, like getting people out on the street. Redwood City has, it was our very first. We have two neighborhoods. They each have 10 people in them. Now, they're actually like 500, 600 households. And the founding member has handed out flyers, they've knocked on doors. So National Night Out, they're trying something different. Their actual, city is sponsoring in those two neighborhoods some events, so that they can get the people out and actually get them going. So it really depends on kind of the people in the neighborhood, whether they want to be or not. We've had some super-successful ones that, where there's a lot of elderly people. Because everybody always says, is it, you know, what about people that don't do computers? But in Riverside, I met just a few weeks ago a lady who started hers, it's called "The Wood Streets," because they're all like elm and birch and stuff like that. But she realized that probably 30% of their population in their neighborhood didn't have computers. And they were elderly, and a lot of them lived alone. So she started a neighborhood volunteer organization on Nextdoor. So they now have a group, a subgroup within the big group, our big neighborhood. And they've got an adoptive grandparent, somebody prints out the daily digest at the end of the day, they take it over to the person. And that, the people that are not watching computers all day long are actually watching the street. They've become the Neighborhood Watch people. So then they feed back information, "Did you see the black car in the neighborhood? That doesn't belong here." And then they get back onto Nextdoor, and they type it in. So there's some great things that can happen community-building-wise, even though people aren't on computers or not really, not wanting to actually join the network. So, so we haven't had a failure city. We've just had some failures in individual neighborhoods within the city.
Anyone else?
My name is Yedid Yedvries, and my questions are mostly from my own curiosity because I, my background is actually in building online tools for community organizing. So I'm just curious. Do I have two questions? How big is the neighborhood? Is the model to target households or individuals? Is there a percentage or number, threshold number at which the conversations start becoming self-sustaining? And I'll stick with that for now, and I'll just email you later with more.
Yeah. So the city has given us a map that's about 50 neighborhoods. And if I just divide the number of households by that number, it's about 200 households per neighborhood. Now, some are probably bigger, and some are probably smaller, just kind of depending upon where they are. We say that when we help individual neighborhoods create their neighborhoods, minimum 100 households is what we found. Some, you know, if you have like 20 households in a homeowner association, you just can't keep a conversation going long-term. You can talk about homeowner association business, but you're just not going to be, you know, "I want to sell my child's bike." Well, nobody on the block wants to buy my child's bike, you know? So we find that a little bit bigger neighborhoods help. So at least 100. We have neighborhoods that are up in 5,000 range, 5,000 household range, that are doing great. So it really depends on the neighborhood, and, yeah, my, my personal neighborhood has 1,600 households. What we find is, once you get past 50 members, you ask about whether we are targeting households or members. Once you get past 50 members, the conversations go in totally different directions, and you have multiple conversations going on at once. So, yeah, there is like a critical mass of trying to get people up to about 50, at least 50 in their neighborhood, and then they start growing from there. But you can have multiple people from a neighborhood, from a household, join.
Anyone else? Pam, you got a second round? Go ahead. Yeah. Today-only special deal.
Pam Wall. We have a lot of non-English-speaking people. How do you include them in this?
So what we have right now is, the site is in English, but we have several cities where there is a large Spanish-speaking population, and certain neighborhoods are 100% Spanish-speaking. They, they write out all their stuff in Spanish, and people respond to them in Spanish. So it's not a problem. I mean, that piece of it is not a problem. We are where we need to kind of make it more, where all of the text is in Spanish as well, or we know there's certain Asian languages that we also need to do. That's a little bit further down because we have other things higher up. But anybody wanting, we have one city, it might even be Galita, does like an, if they're doing something that they think that a lot of the Spanish people, Spanish-speaking people need to know about, they actually will do an English posting and then a Spanish posting, so that you can read it in English or Spanish. Not on everything, but on a couple of the ones that they do, they've done that.
Anyone else? Okay. Dirk, you haven't asked a question yet. You want, you want in on this?
I was just going to ask how big a neighborhood is. I have no background in this.
Um, yeah, go ahead. I think, I think the ones that, with 50, that would be 700-ish on average for us, something like that.
For the population.
Yeah. Now, obviously, there, there's some are a little bigger, and some are a little smaller.
Well, and that includes children, so that's why we kind of look at the household count. That's because, so I'm thinking it's probably around 200 households is your average, 200 to 220 households per neighborhood is your average. And then I noticed that some on the north side might be a little bit bigger. There's like a newer subdivision up here on the north side that looks like it may be more than 200 households. And then some are, have a lot of apartment complexes. Those probably are bigger.
Councilmember Martin, do you have a question? Okay.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. So we look forward to working with the city.
Yeah. City Administrator, do you need a formal action from us, or what do you need to go forward?
Consensus direction.
Okay. So we're looking for consensus to move forward with our friends from Nextdoor. Dirk? No cost, no problem. Okay, I'm, I'm good. Okay. So you have a consensus of four. I think if Councilmember Lingle was here, he'd be the consensus of five.
Excellent.
So thank you for coming, and we all have your card. If we have questions, we'll get right back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll have oral communications. This is your opportunity to talk to us for five minutes about any subject. If you're here to talk about a subject that is on the agenda, and you can wait until that item comes up, and it's a really short agenda, so we'll hope you'll hold on to those comments. Is there anyone who would like to talk about something to us right now? Last chance. Okay. Coming back to council, we're going to have a public hearing. Before we begin this, the city attorney has some opening comments.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted on the agenda and on the staff report, this, this item tonight, well, this isn't, this part isn't noted on the agenda. It's going to be a little interesting tonight. Because we have two people who are going to have to abstain from some of the items, there's times when we're not going to be able to take action on some of the items because we're not going to have a quorum when those two people leave. So specifically, the reason that we're doing that is because the mayor and the Mayor Protem each have property interests in different areas. And so because of that, the items that are listed on your staff report and the items that are listed on the agenda, when we come to those items, we'll have to be getting up and, too, we'll have to be leaving. and then one will have to leave. So my suggestion would be that because there's two items on the agenda, that's, if you're looking at the agenda, it's A2 and A5. If you're looking at the staff report, it's Item 1B and Item 1E. All of you can participate with, in those two items. On Item 1D, only Mayor Pro Tem, Starbuck, needs to recuse himself from that. And on Item 1A and 1C, both the mayor and mayor pro tem have to abstain. So to try to put some path of approach with this process tonight, I'd suggest maybe going with 1B and 1E first, and then 1D, and then you won't be able to do the other two. You just have to continue those.
Say that again, I was looking at the wrong one.
Okay. The ones that all of you, all four of you could participate in is 1B and 1E. The one that only Mayor Pro Tem has to abstain from is 1D. So as to 1A and C, I would just suggest that you advise the public that that's gonna be continued to another night, because you can't do anything with it tonight, because two of you can't participate.
Okay. So I'll, I'm sorry, Councilmember Martin?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we clear out the issue between Item A and D, so if there are members of the public that came for that, they can leave if they like to, and then discuss the rest. I mean, just for the purpose of that, since we cannot take any action on Item A and D, I assume that...
A and C?
I'm sorry, A and C. Sorry, sorry, A and C. We cannot take any actions on Items A and C. I would like to see that we tell the public that next time, right?
If we're not gonna take an action, can I sit here and continue and handle the chair, so we take no action? Or do I need to leave, and you can take no action when I'm not here?
I think it's clear that what the council's saying is, if there's anyone here in the public to speak on 1A and 1C, you suggest they come back at a different time, because you're not gonna hear it tonight.
Okay, so we have a consensus of the four of us that Item 1A and 1C on the staff report, which is Item 1 and 3 on the agenda. We will take no action tonight. So if you're here for those, thanks for coming. Free coffees outside. But we have a couple more things coming up. We have a discussion of time limits for council discussion, and we have some questions that we're gonna forward to the housing authority. And then moving along, how about if we take Item number B? Yeah, you know, that's a problem, maybe.
Could we repeat what Items A and C, for the purpose of the public, that may have agenda item?
Yeah, that would be, on the staff report, it's Item 1A and 1C. And if you're looking at the agenda, it's Item A1 and A3. Ah, I'm sorry. So Item 1A is not move forward with the proposal for the general commercial success zone, GCS Zone District. And number E, or 3, is return the existing commercial zoning districts to the planning commission for review and recommendations of the existing uses and development standards. And I would go on to explain that there is some question on my part as to whether or not being disqualified from this is appropriate, and a letter has been, is in the process of being sent to the state to get a determination with regard to that. Okay. Item B, which is Item 2 on the agenda, not moving forward the proposal for the neighborhood commercial success zone. And I think I'm gonna divide this in terms of the public hearing also. So if you want to speak on this subject, we're gonna take that. But if you want to speak on Items D and E, or 4 and 5, if you'd kind of hold on to those for a few minutes, we'll come back to that. So this is resulting with regard to the neighborhood commercial success zone district. Do we, you want to give a staff report on that one little increment?
Mr. Mayor, I would just advise the council that as shown in your staff report, the planning commission on June the 27th adopted Resolution Number 726/12, recommending the city council not move forward with the proposed neighborhood commercial. And the resolution was adopted on a vote of 4-1 with Commissioner Gonzalez voting no. And I think that's all I'll say on that at this point. Thank you.
And if there are no questions, we'll ask for public comment on this one. Anybody want to talk to us about neighborhood commercial success? Seeing no one rise, we'll close that and come back. From my standpoint, oh, sorry, a little slow on the switch there. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Robert Smidgen.
You have to say your name. Yeah, there you go.
I live here in Lompoc. Recommendation that council received that reviewed planning commission recommendations to not move forward with the proposed recommendation of the neighborhood commercial success zone. And the others, too. I mean, all of this hit the planning commission, and they said, oh, no. Well, I can see they want things to remain in their own special way, as unsuccessful as possible. That's what this looks like to me. We have hard economic times right now, and they aren't gonna get better in the next five to seven years. And the old way of doing things doesn't work, unless somebody hasn't noticed that yet. We've got to go for this. This is a potentially really good way out of the dilemmas financially and business-wise we have in this community, and we have aplenty. This is not simply going to survive as the quote-unquote "bedroom community" I once heard about and felt somewhat dubious about. Now I know why. This stuff, I can't believe that the planning commission reviewed this and came up with negative comments across the board. What could they have in mind? I have no idea. But I gotta tell you, my fellow citizens, I saw the presentations on all these items, especially Number 2, which I'm gonna speak to directly. And this works for us. It works. And the council has just got to look at the planning commission as something that doesn't work. Past planning commissions have come up with the city plan and like that, which hasn't worked, needs to be modified. I just hope that the city council finds it to override what this, the planning commission is recommending. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Susan Gallagher, citizen, mayor and council. I have been to numerous council meetings and several planning commission meetings. And what I have observed is the council has been with the public here stating what they would like to see the downtown look like, or any of the zoning things that we've been talking about. Go to the planning commission, it goes back. And what I have observed is whether the planning commission doesn't know what city council's doing, and does not see the public here expressing what they want. The planning commission now is recommending back to the council to do nothing, when we've had the public here asking for something. And I believe all of you were here watching the public ask for something. And I believe we need to step up to the plate, or you need to step up to the plate, and get this resolved, because we're doing nothing again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Mosby, resident of Lompoc. In these zonings, as commercial neighborhood success zones, I currently have two people who are active tenants in these zones, who have approached me in one of my vacancies to leave these zones and to vacate and go to C2 Zone. So something needs to be done to maybe try to keep those people in those zones, because they are vacating as fast as they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, last chance. Going, going, gone. I think I'll maybe, I'll start out with this. By saying, from my standpoint, I'd just soon leave this item with the other two that we're not gonna act on tonight, because they interlock. And to me, if we don't approach all of them as a group, we really, it isn't, it isn't gonna make any difference. I agree, I think something needs to be done. But if the general commercial success zone isn't created and used, then this zone is gonna be the poor stepchild, and I don't think it's gonna accomplish anything. So personally, I'd just soon leave this item open to go with the other two forward until we can hear them all together, because they're, the way it's drawn now, they're very intertwined. And I would be able to go back and un-intertwine them, and then we could move forward with one. But I would just assume personally that we took them all together, rather than taking them on a piece at a time. Somebody else weighed in?
I'm very inclined to agree with you on that, Mayor, just based on the fact that if we were to change one zone, change our ordinance, and it directly relates to our other commercial zones, that isn't gonna go through, then we do have a pretty big separation in our ordinance at that point.
Councilmember Martin?
I have a question for the legal counsel. The mayor just said that he would like to untwine or separate these two zones, the neighborhood commercial zone with the general commercial zone success zone. Given the fact that he is not allowed to, as a mayor, to make any opinions regarding the general commercial success zone, why should he be able to try to separate them out, when one of them is clearly a conflict of interest?
To the mayor, what I heard the mayor saying was that if, if the idea was to not go forward with the approach that is, was suggested in the original process that we followed, but to actually have this separate neighborhood commercial go forward, and then have the commercial success be something different, that he would want to try to do something to try to see if there was a way to make them match. And as I had said on another occasion, he can do that as a private citizen. He can't do it as the mayor. So whether he was saying he was gonna do it as the mayor or as a private citizen, I'm not sure. But what I also feel comfortable with is, right now in the discussion of whether or not to put Item 1B, do something tonight, or put it off until the decision is made on Item 1A and 1C, that's, that seems to be a legitimate thing for both the mayor pro tem and the mayor to be discussing tonight, because it's just a procedural thing. It's not the focus of what will happen.
Councilmember Coste?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I just wanted to clarify, the planning commission's recommendation was not that we do nothing, but rather that they take a second look to update the uses, instead of adopting the general commercial success zone or the neighborhood commercial success zone. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public. But I would agree that, you know, because these two were formulated together, it wouldn't really make sense to do one one way and then not have the other one follow suit, or change, or morph, or do whatever in the same way as that first one. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, I think that's a consensus of three. So we'll put Item 1B with one Item 1A and 1C for the future. Now, I'd like to go to Item D or 4. Yeah, but the timeline has to do with a decision on all of these, and I don't really want to start the timeline question until we resolve the decision on all of these. Take a break. I'm gonna go to, to D or 4. So, yeah. We're on that again, aren't we? Okay, see ya.
Just for the record, because of the financial interest that the mayor pro tem has in property within the area that's the Old Town specific plan, he's recusing himself from further discussion on this item.
Can he make discussions as citizens?
No, I'm sorry, you can't speak from the audience. Yes, he can speak as a citizen. And I would say at this time that I formerly had a store in the Old Town commercial area, but we relocated it in February, which eliminated my previous conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the planning commission recommendation on the Old Town specific plan, there was a workshop held jointly with the Economic Development Subcommittee as directed by council. And the planning commission then held separate public hearings to review the Old Town boundaries and the uses in that area. The discussion at the planning commission ended with consensus that the Old Town specific plan was in need of a comprehensive update. And the actual boundaries and the uses in that particular plan needed to be looked at in light of the intent of the plan and the entire plan, how it was put together, and the needs of the community, as opposed to pulling out sections of it. The concern with the planning commission was that they wanted to do a comprehensive look at it. And their request was for the city council to direct that the Old Town specific plan be returned in its entirety, so that the commission can work in concert with the community, hold some public hearings, and actually come forward with an entire recommendation. And that recommendation would look at the boundaries and the uses as proposed in that particular area. One concern that was identified by property owners, by members of the Economic Development Subcommittee and the planning commission, was a statement in the Old Town plan that restricts or prohibits the use of professional offices on the ground floor along H Street and Ocean Avenue. That was something that, when the Old Town specific plan was put together, seemed to make good sense. However, it seems to be causing great difficulty at this time. If the council would concur, we would suggest allowing the planning commission to prepare a text amendment to just remove those few words that restrict and prohibit office use. We could then have the planning commission adopt a text amendment, bring it forward to council, and provide some immediate relief to the property owners. And then if the council concurs with returning the entire specific plan, the commission can work towards looking at all of the uses in a more comprehensive manner. But in the meantime, we will have provided relief for what appears to be the most, really the most difficult factor in that plan at this time. So we are requesting that the council provide some direction to us. As noted in the staff report, if the Old Town specific plan is to be returned to the planning commission for review and recommendation for possible amendments, if the staff should proceed with a text amendment, as I previously described. And with those, with that direction, then we could move forward on the Old Town specific plan portion. And that completes my staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned the most troublesome issue at this time is this office space going into the first floor. And you meant, and you're saying that is coming from property owners and members of the public? and members of the public. Is that primarily where you are seeing the, the conflict being expressed by?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We have heard testimony at public hearings at the workshop that was recently held to the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Subcommittee, that was an issue for the property owners, where they had tenants, but those tenants were unable to locate in the Old Town because they were a use that was not permitted. If we were to remove that restriction and to allow the professional offices to go in there, it would provide some relief, I believe, to the property owners.
Could you give me an idea of what percentage of the property owners in the Old Town area have voiced this complaint? As far as statistically, is it just one tenant, or is it many?
Well, we have through the past few years, I mean, we've had inquiries from a number of tenant, proposed tenants, asking that we've had to advise them that they're not able to go into those specific locations. So as far as the percentage of property owners, I really don't know exactly the percentage, but, you know, there are a few that really do have vacant spaces, and they would like to be able to utilize those spaces for an office type use.
Now, isn't it also that the city has worked with other tenants to do, to do, allow this, because we do have some professional offices in the first floors within the Old Town areas? So, it appears to me in the past that it has been dealt in a case-by-case basis, because we do have some of them that are in the first floor, they exist, they're legal, the city allowed them, for, there has been some mechanism, I don't know exactly what the mechanism was. So, so, so if it has, if, if there has been a tenant that has inquired, and there has been a property owner that has made this inquiry, and it has been allowed at a certain time, but it has not been allowed at other times, is there an inconsistency that we're dealing with here, or, or what?
Some of the issues that it have identified are where there is a tenant space that has been utilized as a professional office, and if there is a vacancy, and the vacancy is for a short period, and another professional office wants to come in, then we consider it a legal non-conforming use, and if it was a use that was established prior to the adoption of the Old Town Plan, then we would allow someone to come in and utilize that particular office, and retain it as an office use.
So this was sort of like a grandfather?
Correct, that, yes. We're, we're trying to work with people to allow them to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Costin?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I read in the Planning Commission minutes that there was some discussion of doing this, however, requiring a conditional use permit instead of just as a permitted use. Where did that discussion lead? It didn't say in the minutes.
That discussion, it wasn't just that discussion, and the Planning Commission would look at that when they did the comprehensive update of the uses in the Old Town.
Okay, so what we're really deciding here is, is if we should just send this back to the Planning Commission to be approved with a resolution to bring back to council?
Yes, that, that ones, there's two items. If we send the Old Town specific plan back, and the council, or the commission looks at that entire plan, they will look at the intent, the development standards, the uses, the boundaries, the whole.
And the uses will include, though, the office?
This is true. We would, however, ask if the council concurs, and we could take back that one sentence at this time, then the Planning Commission would have the opportunity to make a recommendation to council that we just strike that language.
But that still doesn't answer my question, in regards to conditional use permit?
That would be something, that would be part of the discussion that they would have when they would review it.
So, but if we were to strike the language now, we could strike the language and allow it, and then they would institute a conditional use permit a couple months down the line?
They may move it to the conditional use permit section. That, they would look at that particular use, just that one use, and say, would we allow office uses just to be permitted, and strike the request at all for, or the statement that says they're restricted from H and Ocean?
But you're requesting that council provide that information this evening, is that correct?
We're just asking council's concurrence to let the Planning Commission look at that one specific part of the, the ordinance. I'm sorry if it was unclear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I would share that the office space at I and Ocean in front of Paulin's floor covering was, they were able to go in there because they did computer repair, but then when they moved out, an office use tried to be there and couldn't, and there has been two people who have talked to me about that space, because it's about the right size for an office, so that hasn't worked. There is a building at K and Ocean on the south side, and that initially was considered for a real estate facility, and that wasn't possible, however, because there's a loan broker operation in there, that met the requirements. There is a space where Armaro Electric was, which is in the middle of the 200 block of East Ocean on the north side, and there is someone that talked to us, to me, about a composite use of retail space and mostly office, and that wasn't suitable. And I think the most recent one was someone who wanted to take office space in the ground floor of the Lilly Building, but that had not been office space in quite a while, and the grandfather had expired in effect. And then there's a building in the 100 block of South H on the east side, next to the, to the Landscape Park, and there was quite some discussion when that building was purchased, but it had been in an office use. So initially, they were told, no, you, you know, you bought the building, but you can't have your office here, but ultimately, it was determined they were grandfathered. And of course, the gas company's grandfathered, they've been there forever and a half. So those are the ones I'm immediately familiar with. And if I think about it, there's probably a couple more. There have been a couple other people who looked or asked me about the downstairs in the Lilly Building for an office, and I asked staff about that a year ago, and it just wasn't possible. So, we'll open this to oral communication, and who would like to talk to us on this subject? And I think the subject is twofold. Number one would be our consideration to return this to the Planning Commission for a comprehensive review of the Old Town specific plan and the Old Town zoning ordinance, because they go hand in hand. And item number two would be to have a more immediate change to that ordinance to allow office spaces on the ground floor, either via the conditional use process, or just as a permitted use, depending on what the Planning Commission decided, and hopefully we would give them a recommendation on that. So, who'd like to talk to us? Come on down.
My name is Mark Donars, I own the Lilly Building. And I've had a problem renting the, I'll give you a little history about the Lilly Building. It was built in 1898. Originally, on the corner of Ocean and H was the Bank of Italy, which later changed over to the Bank of America, which later changed over to the Lompoc Bank. Next door, well, when the bank closed, the office, the office became Lilly Real Estate. Next door to Lilly Real Estate was Lilly Insurance. Next door to Lilly Insurance was, oh, Lompoc Travel. And, and Lompoc Travel occupied two offices. On the end of the building was a secretarial service. And so the history of the building is such that it was never designed to be retail. All the offices within the building are offices, and it's all cubicles and things like that. I, when we did the earthquake retrofit on the corner of H and Ocean, it was put back together at, at the request of the Mannings, who wanted to open up a dress shop, and so we did that. But to redo that building, to make it retail, is, you know, financially impossible. And so, as you walk down the street from, from the Lilly Building heading north, the first building you run into is Lompoc Record. Now, if Lompoc Record fails, are you going to go tell the owner of that building to make it retail? Not practical. Next door to him is an attorney's office. If you go into Walnut Plaza, you know, it's all service organizations, tax preparation, insurance, and, and the story goes on, you just keep going down the block. So it's, it's created an impossible situation for us, to the point where, you know, if I can't get some relief from the city, I'm just going to have to board up the building and walk away. I'm losing a fortune, just because of one word. One word says "office," you know? What would you rather have? I mean, you look at downtown, and it's, you know, it's not conducive to what the original plan was. I mean, that all came about when they hired a consultant to come in here and give the city ideas to, you know, bring old downtown back, Old Town back. Well, it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked in 10 years. But there are people that are willing to come in, you know, this real estate office wants to come in, and, and so he, he went to the Planning Commission and said, well, you have to get a special use, what is it, I don't know what they call it?
Conditional.
huh? Conditional, yeah. Well, turns out that to apply for conditional use, you have to put down $500. And there's no guarantee that it might not go up to $2,000. I mean, what, what business, small businessman can afford that? And why take away from a building owner the right to rent a building that has been for almost over 100 years, offices? Are you telling me if somebody wants to come in, open a bank, you're going to say, no? We don't allow banks in town. I mean, you, you have to use just a little common sense. If something doesn't work, roll with the punch. Come up with an idea that does work. So, you know, I don't know what else to say, except, you know, I hope I can get some relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
My name is still Yadidya DeVries, and since you so kindly separate out the two issues of the Old Town Plan and the offices, I'll try to structure my comments the same way. First, with regard to the Old Town Plan, I was at the May 9th joint workshop between the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Subcommittee, or whatever their official title is. And we spent, as far as I could tell, two hours talking about maps, and about the map for Old Town, and then also a little bit of time talking about these offices. More than anything, what I saw was a lack of creativity. I understand that what we have right now doesn't work. I don't think that tweaking maps or tweaking zoning ordinances is what we need, or it's what's going to take to get us there, it might be part of it, but I would rejoice at a bigger conversation about what the Old Town specific plan needs to look like to get us there. Second, with regard to the offices, I'm somewhat agnostic about whether or not to allow offices in Old Town or not. I think that's probably a conversation that should take place within that broader, broader conversation about what we're going to do to make it a vibrant downtown. But just sort of the three, the, the things that I, that I would like to hear before a decision is made one way or the other, I presume there was a reason that we had that prohibition in there to begin with. So, there, there are a few things that, that could, I understand that, you know, what was supposed to happen didn't happen, but there are a few things that could have happened. One, the whole thing failed because of this one prohibition. I don't think that's seriously what we're saying here. I think we, a lot more happened in our downtown, and there were a few other properties that were supposed to be redeveloped that weren't, and there were other failures. So that's not the reason to change it. It could be that we're saying, we're just giving up on that plan, whatever the reason there was, wasn't good, and, you know, that's not going to happen, so now we're just going to go with something completely different, and so now we'll start allowing offices, just so we'll have something instead of that original plan. I, that seems like a reasonable argument, but if so, I'd like to hear it said explicitly, and also how it relates to potentially revisiting the Old Town specific plan as a whole, so that we don't shoot ourselves in the foot trying to put in a temporary fix, but we actually want a different long-term fix. Or third, maybe it wasn't a good reason to begin with, maybe, or we do want a mix of offices and commercial, though now I've also heard that we already have a reasonable amount of office space in there. And so, you know, if that's the reason, maybe exactly what sort of percentage, what sort of mix, and how that relates to the mixture we already have. So I would just, like, a little bit more clarity on exactly what the reasoning is on changing this, what, what my heart goes out to the property owners there, just to help out, property owners rent, I don't think is a good enough reason, especially given that presumably there was a reason that we went down this road to begin with. Thank you.
After I get everybody's testimony, I'll give you a little history.
Dirk Starbuck, citizen Lompoc. I'm going to bounce around here a little bit. The Old Town specific plan, as it's written, I really don't see a whole lot of issues with this plan. Obviously, it hasn't been followed to the T because of what's happened. I, I want to say that I think that the zoning ordinance is, again, the government impeding the landlord here. This is a property owner's right, I think. I feel Mr. Donars has the right to rent property. Because somebody comes up, and a consultant, and everybody concurs with an Old Town specific plan that says, no, offices on the ground floor, now we've shut off his right to rent to people, where he's ideally situated. Office spaces are conducive to downtown traffic. Everybody wants downtown traffic, they want foot traffic. I, I don't see why we don't just strike this. When you look at what is allowed in downtown, read the Old Town specific plan, it's easier to figure out the four things that aren't. Everything that's allowed is good. The one conversation this council had about maps was to go ahead, if they were going to pursue the general commercial success zone, was to eliminate Walnut North, that would put the Beatty property back into the zoning for general, general commercial success. That was the, what was asked of council. It went to planning, or what council asked. When it went to the Planning Commission, it turned into a color crayon sign-creating day, and we've, at this point, tried to cut the Old Town off at I Street, affecting parking on everybody all the way down to L Street. We're going way off a base here. The plan's in place. There's really nothing wrong with the plan, other than this one item that's come out about the offices. I mean, go ahead and allow the offices, let the fill-in begin downtown. Offices will be replaced with retail eventually, when the property values come up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, I speak tonight, my name is Nicholas Gonzalez, a property owner of 320 West Ocean. I'm speaking as a property owner. There were some very valid questions that were asked, and I'll take a, a trip back to what I could recall and, and a little research that I've done. The Old Town was part of the Greater Redevelopment project area, and as part of redevelopment, one of the goals is that you do two things. One is increase sales tax, and the other is that you increase property tax. Unfortunately, within the Old Town, what I've observed, and I think what most people would agree, is you have basically two form, two, two footprints. You, and I, and I've stated this information before numerous times in front of the council, is that, one, you have very large spaces, okay? And so to make those spaces economically feasible, you have to be able to fill them and use them in a manner that is, gives you the ability to pay the landlord the monthly rent. So, I think the last time I said, imagine that somebody's selling widgets. Well, how many widgets? Well, how many widgets does he have to sell, if he has to fill a 10,000-square-foot footprint with widgets, to be able to pay a rent? The other one was, on that same note, a small footprint, small building, well, you can't sell enough widgets out of that small space to afford to pay for the rent. So, there's, if you go back to some basic fundamentals of, of economics and look, there's an optimal space. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of, of buildings that are in that optimal space. So, now, going back to the ability to have office space, one of the biggest drivers for the success is going to be foot traffic. I happen to live in the Santa Monica area while I attended college. Well, that transition from a very destitute, blighted area, to if anyone was to go today, is a very vibrant success story for redevelopment. And when they initially started, it was very flexible. But as spaces filled, rent started to increase. And as the rent started to increase, you did see a natural progression from less office, less, uh, general-type uses to more retail uses, because that was, and you also see reconfigurations. But before you were able to see the reconfigurations of the buildings, to, to bring them to those optimal, you had to have an increase in the rents. And we kind of have the old circular equation here, is that we want to have more retail sales to increase sales tax. We want to, if the sales taxes increase, you know, we're assuming that the, the properties are successful in the property tax, but if we don't get that influx in there, it, it's never going to happen. And, and I would attribute a large part of why downtown hasn't been redeveloped, to, to those basic fundamental, um, facts, is that we need to address, or be more flexible to get people to go in, adaptively reuse these buildings any way that we can, that is in re, in respect to health and public safety. And then, as that fills in, and those rents go, we can then, you can then constrain a little bit more, but then that will afford property owners, such as myself, the ability to then be able to afford to either reconfigure the offices, improve the offices. But right now, we're, we're somewhat in a, in a zero-sum game when you limit, um, limit uses. The, the other item was, is that there was, there was discussions of cutting and, and changing and removing certain existing, um, development rights in regard to use. Now, one of them was removing certain parcels from the Old Town. Well, another part of the Old Town is, most of these buildings have footprints that don't really accommodate parking. So, within, within the code, if you change the use of a property, you now have to accommodate a certain level of parking. So, that's why it was also important to, to kind of keep most of those properties within an area that, that afforded people the flexibility to use the lots that were owned by the RDA in the city for parking. Otherwise, they would become, again, at, you know, that's functional abselessence, that you no longer can develop based on other needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Schmiedeke. Got to say it into the microphone. Ah, Robert Schmiedeke, resident of Lompoke. I moved here about seven years ago. Bought a house about six years ago. Paid $350,000 for that place. Put 150 grand down. I, uh, wasn't broke then, I am now, but the economy caught up with me in other places from investments. That house is now worth, if I was real optimistic, 180 grand. That has a lot to do mostly with the economy, but it has a lot to do with this, with the general plan of this community, and what has happened here. Now, there are people, I, I did bother to buy a rental property here, and, uh, I paid good money for it. I brought that up once at a, at a council meeting, and one of the councilmen advised me, in, it was, it's recorded, I don't know exactly when, that I was just trying to make money off of that property, so downzoning it would be okay. Um, this is America, folks. Yeah, this is where we are, at least it was, and we're entitled to make a profit. We're entitled to do that. Now, I'm, I'm losing money. I'm going to, I'm going to keep the house. I can't afford to sell it. I can't give that much away. I'm losing bigger than that in other cities. This zoning, the city council came up with some really good answers. And there are people who are determined, and I don't know what people they are, to maintain a status quo that was creating a ghost town in Lompoke. That's a nice little town. I bet it was really nice once before, but look around. Look at the empty housing. Look at the, the dilapidated rentals. Look at the, the dilapidated businesses. I mean, in the Old Town section, you can open a bar, you can open a head shop, uh, maybe even a few massage parlors and tattoo parlors, but you don't want to open an office. My God, why would anybody want to do that?
You need to address your comments to us.
Yes. So, what I'm saying is, the Planning Commission is way out of line, and I see things where people are, you know, told that, "Well, you can't be on, at, at the dais because you may own a property there." Well, how about you can't be at the dais because you live in the town? This is not a very big town. You live very close to the things that we're talking about, and you might have a personal interest, or a friend that owns property there, and therefore, that could be a conflict of interest. Perhaps we should have this heard by the county. The council had a good idea. It's still there. God only knows what the Planning Commission has in mind, as the powers that shouldn't be try to recuse people who should not be recused from making open comments about this. We've got a better plan than what existed. Just trying to slow it down, to kill it, is not a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name's Victor Vega, citizen and also a business owner here in town. I can tell you that the viability of allowing the spaces in Old Town to be, to have some lights on again, is going to be really good for Lompoke as far as for the strength of H and Ocean, okay? People coming in all day long. I drive there all day long, and I see the exposure here right at H and Ocean. But to see for rent signs, see the blight that actually you see in the beginning, it doesn't look good for Lompoke. You know, what's happening here is, we're all being pushed toward the north of the city, instead of actually back toward the south of the city where you're trying, trying to rebuild it. So, basically, you're pushed into a commercial development that's already vacant, subject to CAM charges, which are common area maintenance charges. Most of the commercial buildings in the Old Town probably are probably some of the best landlords in town, if the restrictions were removed. So, basically, you're dealing with private owners. Maybe they're going to charge a rent, but maybe they don't have the excessive charges going along with it, which would actually provide a service and put a good business in town, where people coming into town might get their first impression changed right away, instead of going, "Oh, this is Old Town. Wow, they're still working on it." You know what I mean? We need to make, put the lights on, make Lompoke, and H and Ocean needs to be more of the core of Lompoke, in the focus of, instead of everybody pushing toward North H Street, which already has lights on. So, if you really want to make Lompoke look better, let the lights come on in the corner of H and Ocean. You know, we have a lot of traffic going every day. We're being known as a bedroom community. We don't need that anymore. We have a lot of people here. We have the base, we have all kinds of employment, there's lots of cars going downtown. Where are they going? We need to put some, we need to put some services there that these people that are moving in here, or coming in from the base, or coming from wherever, we have new businesses coming in, obviously, they need to be able to get some core services in the middle of Lompoke, not going all the way north, and then ignoring the downtown. So, anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance. Going, going, come on, you guys.
Mayor, councilman, my name's Dwayne Homdahl. I don't own any property downtown. Uh, it sounds like a simple thing to do. We don't need a conditional use permit. They could actually run 500. Sounds like all they want to do is change the wording and go back to the Planning Commission, and it'll be done in the next meeting. I think the other thing I heard tonight was that the Planning Commission is meeting with other committees. If there's a workshop you need, you need between the Planning Commission and the, and the council itself, so everybody's on the same page. But I think this is the simplest one to get. The other plus nobody talked about is that if it's office, it doesn't take as much parking. If you have commercial in there, then you've got to find parking for everybody to walk up there and do all the things you want to. In downtown, there is parking on the south, southwest side, of course, in the back, but that way, if you're in all these little places, I've been here since 1950, and so, most of those little businesses there, and I've used every one of those old businesses now that you say you can't use in the office space, uh, they could be offices that would be used. But that's the other plus, is that you could have people come down, you got offices doing things, and it would work. So, I think that'd be the simplest and the fastest route to go, is just go ahead and change that word, send it back to the Planning Commission, and that could go on its way.
Thank you.
Pam Wall, local citizen. One thing I want to say about Old Town, and I agree with getting some lights on, but also is the appearance. Not just getting people in there and the lights on, but cleaning it up, cleaning the facades up, giving it some character and some continuity. It looks like it's, anything goes, quite frankly, to me. It's any signage, banners, whatever people want to do. And it needs to, um, have some kind of theme to it, or continuity, or, uh, standards to what we have there. So, just turning the lights on with what we're looking at outside, and people driving by, is not necessarily going to fix the problem. But I do agree that, um, if offices go in there, towns evolve, and hopefully, if we get it thriving again, our downtown will, uh, evolve into what we'd like to have it long-term, retail, both, even a mix. A lot of towns succeed very well with that kind of a mix. So, clean it up, light it up.
Thank you. Last chance. Going, going, gone. Okay. Let me address a couple of, of things that were said, and I'll be right over to you. In the evolution of downtowns, be it Lompoke or anywhere else, what generally happens is, you end up with high vacancies, which then drives down rents, and large spaces that have low rents generally attract furniture stores, thrift stores, and antique stores, which describes what we have in every large space in downtown. And on the other side of it, small spaces generally attract office uses, because there's not adequate foot traffic yet for boutiques. Then, as the foot traffic builds up in the, the antique stores and thrift stores and furniture stores, and the office people who are there begin to create demand, that tends to bring in, um, small restaurants, small shops, and that starts the process of raising rents, because retail stores can generally pay a much higher rent than an office space. And as those rents come up, and there's more demand, then the offices migrate out, and then ultimately, the thrift stores and the antique stores migrate out, and regular retailers migrate in. And this is a, a pretty standard way that things have gone forward. And the other thing that happens is, when those, that starts to shift to more conventional retail, at higher rents, then the landlords have the ability to refurbish buildings, to make internal space changes, to put in sprinkler systems, and to do those things that make the buildings rent for more money, and then they rent for more money, and so on. And so, that's the, the traditional approach in downtown. Why did we have this office, um, restriction? We had this because when that was discussed, it was felt that if we held the space open by not allowing offices, that retail stores would come in. Thirteen years later, that hasn't proven to be a successful model, and I think it's probably time to change that model, at least in the near term, and then I think economics will take care of it ultimately. Um, I'm sorry, who was first? Councilor Martin.
You did give your light off first, though. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'll take turns.
I appreciate your comment. You have mentioned that before. I think it's your opinion. I would like to hear some facts about the progression of how a downtown develops. I haven't seen any analysis or data that shows that that's how downtowns develop. Having said that, I, at this point in time, I am not certain where this office restriction came from. I think it was, I believe, to increase foot traffic. Again, that was an opinion. That was not a fact. It was an opinion. I do know that there are other offices in downtown, and they have been allowed, and that was, again, because of some loopholes in the system. I do know that there are some large spaces, and it seems unreasonable that those large spaces may be profitable, but we have a wonderful example of somebody very creative in downtown that made that large space a whole bunch of little spaces, and he's making a good living at it. So, there is an aspect of creativity that can be found. It doesn't have to be so black and white. I am, you know, I see that there is so much of this black and white that goes on, that the previous plan is bad, it doesn't work, there is some mean people out there that want to turn this town into a ghost town. I really don't have any evidence that any of that is going on. I don't think that just by removing these magical restrictions, we're all going to get rich and have a super dynamic downtown. I don't think that's the case either. So, if the property owners feel that they want to rent their space with offices, so be it. Let them do it. Okay? I don't feel that I have to put a restriction on that. But I do have an opinion, and I am disappointed to hear how it is being expressed as people wanting to keep this town down. I think having visions of having a dynamic downtown with foot traffic and having the lights on is a great vision. I hope these offices are open until midnight, so those lights stay on all night long, because we need them in downtown.
Thank you. Councilor Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I do know that there's been discussion at the Planning Commission level in regards to not just, again, not just being black or white, not just allowing the use or not allowing the use, but putting some conditions on that. I know that they talked about a certain percentage of square footage. I know they also talked about reviewing. I think it was a five-year review. So, for me, I, I'm fine with it going back to the Planning Commission with a recommendation that council thinks that these uses should be allowed in the downtown area. I also am completely comfortable with the Planning Commission reviewing and potentially making recommendations to amendments in regard to the Old Town specific plan. You know, whether it's good as it stands or not, you know, I think reviewing it is, is a good exercise, and I think that it's something that we should update, you know, to ensure future success. So, I'm, I'm okay with both of the recommendations. I don't know, I think that we all sound like we're on board in, in that regard for those three items. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with both council members. I think we need to lift that office restriction in, in the quick, expedient way, and if we're going to, if the, I'm sorry, if the Planning Commission chose to review it again in two years, three years, five years, and, and see how it had progressed, these are living documents, and they should be reviewed. This is a 13-year-old document, so it's probably a little past time on that. I, I would be willing to make a motion, but I want to seek consensus from the council on one other issue, and that was the discussion that the Planning Commission had with regard to the maps, and the discussion circulate, or focused around circulate, or focused around whether or not to take off three blocks. One was the block from I to J on East Ocean. One was the block from F to G, I'm sorry, on West Ocean. One was the block from F to G on East Ocean, and one was the block from Cypress to Walnut on North H. Because of the parking situation in downtown and the parking district that was originally established, I don't see the idea for taking off either the East or West Ocean parcel. I would be in favor of taking off the, a portion of the block from Walnut to Cypress, if we can do part of a block, or the whole block if we can't. And I would ask Lucille if she could comment on that. And I guess the thought with regard to that is the building at the corner of the old LPI, the La Presima Inn, the building at Walnut and H, which would be the northwest corner. Is it generally block by block, or can you, can you cut her in the middle?
You can adjust by parcel, if you follow parcel lines. It is possible.
Okay. So, that building would be similarly impacted by the parking restriction, and it might work to include that parcel, and then the Santa Barbara Bank and Trust parcel across the street, for instance. But principally, I'm concerned about that parcel, and I'm wondering what Councilmembers' thoughts are. Councilmember Martin?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not ready to discuss the maps. I think getting to that specifics and that detail, I think, is the role of the Planning Commission. So, I will support a motion regarding the general language and the proposal that the Planning Commission looks at this further. But as far as specifics on the maps, I am not ready to make any statements for or against it at this point in time.
Lucille, do you feel like the Planning Commission was looking for some thoughts from us with regard to the map, or do they just want to kick it around some more?
I believe they were just asking for the ability to do a comprehensive review of the plan as it is at this point.
Okay. In that case, let's see if I can craft a motion. I move that we authorize the Planning Commission to conduct a comprehensive review of the Old Town specific plan and the Old Town zoning ordinance, and we request the Planning Commission to immediately amend the Old Town specific plan to allow office uses on the ground floor of H and Ocean, and attach any future review that they think is appropriate. How'd I do?
Marilyn, they may want some input in regards to the allowed use of the office in downtown, but with that motion, you're not allowing any of their input. So, it's going to come back to us for our final approval, anyway. So, I say we send it back, get their input, and then we make the final decision when it comes back.
Okay. So, is that a second?
If amended, yes.
Okay. I'm not sure how to amend it. City Attorney, I don't know how to divide office uses. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that anything needs to be done. What I hear, what the motion was, is have the Planning Commission review the entire specific plan, and also review the removal of the office space on the bottom floor, and they'll bring back to you what their recommendations are. You-
That's not the way it was stated. The way you're stating it, yes, I agree.
Well, what I said, what I said was to apply urgency to making the change to the office use, so that they would make that decision first and send that back to us immediately. And the, okay, that's what I tried to say. Sorry.
I will second that motion.
All right. Since-
Could we repeat the motion, please?
I don't think I could.
The amended motion?
Well, I think I might ask the City Attorney to craft something for me.
The Council is accepting the Planning Commission's recommendation to return the Old Town specific plan to the Planning Commission for a comprehensive review and recommendation.
With the zoning ordinance?
All part of the specific plan. The specific plan is the zoning ordinance for the-
Okay. Sorry.
Downtown. And also to immediately bring forward and review, amending the text to remove the ordinance, the office restriction on the ground floor, and to bring that back to the Council before the entirety of the other review.
That work for everybody? I so move.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? This will require unanimous vote. Can we vote, please? And that passes three yes, one absent, one abstain. Okay, we got that one. And we'll be taking up item 1E on the staff report. All right. Come on, everybody, find a chair. And item A5 on the agenda.
Thank you, Marilyn. This portion of the staff report addresses consideration of amendments to the adopted timeline for the general plan update.
Hold on just a second. Got to get a couple of doors shut. We can turn the air conditioning on.
It won't go on.
It won't go on. Can you check and see if we paid our electric bill?
We had this issue.
Okay, that's good. It's quiet out there now.
Thank you. The Planning Commission expressed concern at their recent hearings due to the number of hearings that were needed for review of the commercial component of the zoning ordinance. And they asked staff for a brief update, which we provided, and it's included as an attachment to the Council staff report. Just a brief listing of some of the new projects. We've seen an increase in activity in the Planning Division, which we're very pleased to report, working with applicants and counter work. And the Commission is concerned that they don't want to impact our ability to work with development and to make things happen in a positive way if we're in the midst of trying to do some of the text amendments and some of the policy things that, and administrative work that we normally do in a less intense time period. We have been meeting on a regular basis, two meetings a month, but it's very difficult, and we are falling further behind in the actual implementation of the timeline that was adopted by Council. And the Planning Commission just wanted to bring that to the Council's attention, to advise when the original timeline was adopted, it was with the consideration that each body would hold one public hearing, and then the project would move on. At this point, for the commercial, we held four already. So, it's just pushing things a little bit further behind each time. We've indicated on the staff report of just a brief timeline of where we are, and it will really depend on Council's direction, on what we do when we get to the general commercial success, because, as we noted previously, the work will need to be done with the general plan amendment. That language will need to be adopted, or I'm sorry, not adopted, but will need to be amended, dependent on what the final decision is. So, there is work that is going to be pushed out further. So, we're just kind of bringing you that status report. And I also have listed in the staff report, you know, kind of where some of the individual text amendments are, and the parking regulations. We're on our third hearing for the parking regulations. The airport zone, we have not yet returned that to Council, although I know we've been directed to do so. It just is the same kind of, we're falling behind.
Well, I'd like to compliment you on being behind for good reasons, because I continue to receive positive compliments from those folks who are bringing projects here, and that we're very timely, and we're helping them go forward. So, those things that bring jobs, we're doing really well on, and the administrative side, yeah. Councilmembers, Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I think it's time for us, we're at an important juncture, to ask ourselves the fundamental question. And I don't want anything thrown at me, so hold the stones really quick. I'm going to say the word consultant. I was on the phone with a city planner from Santa Barbara today. I was also on the phone with a city planner from the city of Fresno today. And I sat on the phone with the planner from the city of Fresno, and it was interesting, because they're actually currently doing a comprehensive update of their zoning ordinances. So, the first thing that he mentioned, I mean, you can imagine they have a huge planning department. We have a planning department of two. They are hiring consultants. And he explained why, because as generalists, our city staff is not prepared to bring the expertise that I'm particularly looking for in the analysis of zoning. So, that said, I think that it would assist us in finishing this process in a timely manner before the November election, which I know we all want to do, to make sure we've gotten something done, and also assist our planning staff in allowing them to focus on developments that are coming into town, and they have some listed here. So, I wanted to ask Council to consider that, of course, pending the finance availability. Thank you.
I think from my standpoint, and I've said it before, I'm not as concerned about having it done before a November election as I am about having it done right. I would surely entertain considering a consultant. But I think a lot of the issues that are involved in this are more a matter of things we as a Council and we as a Planning Commission have to resolve, and I don't think a consultant's going to help us a great deal with regard to that.
Marilyn, if I could just disagree strongly, and the only reason I say so is because I am not an urban planner. So, today, I spent many, many hours figuring out what Euclid zoning was, what Euclidian II zoning was, what smart zoning was, what floating districts were. You know, I, the point being that I can do as much research as I want, but I'm not a professional, and I cannot say definitively, you know, what policies may fit best in our community. I need some basis for that, and I really need some professional analysis to move forward, to feel comfortable. I need some information, some data, some background, that I don't know that us as a Council have the professional skills to do. So, and again, that's only one of my arguments. The other one is really to facilitate continuing this process in a timely manner with a staff of only two people. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am kind of struggling with this concept of a consultant, primarily because we have gone down the path of consultants, and that was the general plan update consultant. That was nearly a million dollars, and because of politics, we threw it out the window. And now, we're doing some very unorthodox, you know, process in which we set all the zoning out first, and then we update our general plan. I don't think there is a planner in California that has ever followed that process. So, we're doing something different and new. Probably consultants are going to scratch their heads when they hear what the city of Lompoc is trying to do with their plan update. We did have a consultant. We did have a general plan update. We were almost there, and we threw it out the window, because we decided that it was all wrong, that we needed to take care of a couple of things. And we've gotten ourselves in this loop, where we go back and forth between half a Council and a Planning Commission that says, no, that doesn't make any sense, or nobody's asking. Then we have public comment over here that says, no, this is what we want. And I find myself finding scattered, absolutely scattered information. And I totally concur with Councilmember Costa. That is impossible to make a decision when you have this kind of scattered information, because the information that we get here today is from some, one property owner. I like to know how many property owners are there. I like to know how many of them want to change, how many of them do not want to change. I want to know what their concerns are. I also want to know about the tenants. We do have an Old Town with tenants. Have they come up up here and speak about what their complaints or not their complaints are? No. Have we invited them? No. Yes, we do have public hearings. So, it's very difficult, from one meeting to the next, to try to get an understanding of what makes sense for this community. It is very difficult. So, what I think Councilmember Costa is trying to do is that she's trying to say, well, it's very difficult to make sense. There are people that are professionally trained to sort out what the effect of certain zonings are and what the restrictions are. Can somebody explain to that, that to us in an objective, non-biased way and a generic way? And we are having difficulties. We don't have the answers to those questions. Now, does that mean that we need to go and get a consultant? I don't think we're going to be able to do so, because I don't know where the money's going to come from. Is the staff going to be able to do it? You know, we ask the questions. The staff says, it's your decision. It's a policy decision. You make it up. But to be able to dictate smart policies and policies that work, we need to understand what the community needs, and not just what one or two fellows, or gentlemen, or, you know, ladies. It's the community at large, because we're here to represent the whole community, not just a couple of special interests. We're really to represent here the whole community. So, I would like to see more analysis. And I know that you guys are booked. So, where can we get that analysis? The Planning Commission is not supplying that analysis. How can we do it? How can we get some specific analysis with some data? What other cities are doing? What are all the possible things to do? How many zonings? What are the restrictions? How can we get educated, so we can make a smart policy?
Perhaps what I would suggest, a very long time ago, when we wrote a sign ordinance, was the process that we followed was, we collected some ordinances from other cities that seemed to be working. As I recall, we used one from Simi Valley, which has been successful in a multitude of ways. As a matter of fact, I was speaking to someone today who was singing the praises of the way they did things down there. Bulton has very new ordinances that were designed in a more contemporary period. I'm sure we could find a couple more, and perhaps what might be helpful would be if the staff could chase down a couple more recent ordinances and provide a copy of those four to each of us, so we could become a little more self-educated. I've read Bulton's at length. I haven't read Simi Valley's in a lot of years, but the zoning ordinance. I've read Bulton's at great length and was very impressed by it, and the way that they approached it, which seemed to be a newer, more contemporary look, since their ordinance was less than ten years, well, it's 10 years old now. But I looked at it two years ago, so it was eight years old then. And I would, I guess I'd look at Simis just because of what I remember from 1984 and comments that I had today in conversations with someone who does developments in a number of cities, and they were talking very positively about those ordinances. And I'm sure the city attorney probably knows a city that has perhaps newer, more modern ordinances that have been- modern ordinances that have been more recently drafted. And maybe you could just collect a set of those and give them to each of us, not necessarily at a council meeting, but independently, so we could do a little reading and thinking. That might be a good starting point. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Understanding that zoning is not as simple as it may seem, I'm interested in not just looking at zoning, other potential zoning ordinances from cities, but what are other potential sources of zoning? So that said, you know, again, I was looking into this idea of Euclidian 2-style zoning. So there's a silly analogy, you know, it doesn't matter how good the frosting is, if the cake's no good, it's not going to be any good. So for us to try to change the Euclidian zoning that we currently have now, on the surface, by doing this sort of what we think is a comprehensive change, when in fact, a lot of communities are actually shifting to an entirely new cake, right, entirely new style of zoning, I think that we need to be on board with looking at not just what we have now and ways to improve it, but really what's on the stage in regards to zoning and planning in general. So I mean, like, you know, talking about smart zoning, unfortunately, I love the idea, I don't think it's really going to work for our community, but there's something called a floating district, and that could be a really good potential solution to our mixed-use issue that we've been seeing, and issues of refinancing and insurance and things like that. So I just don't want us to be close-minded and have a few examples of what we currently do, and maybe make that a little bit better. But if we're really going to change this and we're really ready to overhaul it, we need to consider all of our options.
What city did you look at that seemed to have something evolutionary?
You know, I would have to look. I mean, I focused more on the fundamentals and not on the, they all gave examples of cities underneath, and there was like links to their zoning ordinances, but mostly on the fundamentals of what styles of zoning were different and how they worked. So I'd have to go back and look, to be honest.
So could you make a couple of recommendations to the staff, so we could have those to look at too, please?
I've already sent her a link of two really long PDF earlier today, so, yeah, I can do that, that's fine.
Okay. That might be a good place for us to, I know we're not planners, but we're elected to make a decision, and I think one of the things that Councilmember Martin said, and I happen to agree with her completely, is in the past, we've hired consultants, and then it didn't seem like it fit our needs, and so maybe we just need to work on it and see if we can fit our needs. And maybe we need a facilitator to come and sit with us and help us figure that out, but maybe we have that in-house also. So if you could return with, or deliver those to all of us in the near future, we could look those over and kind of get an idea of which way to go, maybe?
Sure.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Dirk?
I guess I'm, with regard to a timeline, I would say the planning commission probably needs to look at the Old Town commercial that we gave them, the other issues that they have with regard to whatever you want to say about commercial. There'll be a time lag before we get answers back with regard to our requests from the state, and when I would be ready to proceed. Are there any other instructions we want to give with regard to the timeline at this point? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is actually something requested by Councilmember Lingle, would be a discussion of time limits for the council to discuss agenda items. And Councilmember Martin.
Mr. Mayor, this agenda item was requested by Councilmember Lingle. He's not here, he's not present. I just feel, if I was somebody that was making a request for an agenda item, I would like to have that agenda item discussed while I'm present, because I'd really like to hear why he wanted to put it on the agenda. So I would propose that we table this until Councilmember Lingle comes back.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Or we could vote four to nothing that he can't speak at meetings.
I have to tell you, I'm not in favor of limiting council comments. I think maybe sometimes, other than Dirk, we all talk a little bit longer. But maybe we could form a reminder system. So compliments of my wife.
Oh, yes.
Yes, she did it. She went out and bought us all egg timers.
[laughing].
Can you have a green one? Yes, you can have a green one. I'll take the blue one, and, yeah, and you guys can pick one. And this is, oh, she's got hers. And this is not a formal thing, like, we're not going to say, okay, at three minutes, stop talking. I think it's more of a reminder of watching the sand through the hourglass and then trying to be a little more dutiful about saying something. Maybe you didn't let Councilmember Martin have her, they're three-minute timers.
Mine's not calibrated.
I think the yellow one should go to Councilmember Lingle.
Yeah, he got a yellow one, so you can pick the color you want. But I think if we just left these in our drawers up here and kind of used them as a reminder, no, you don't have to put it up so public to watch, just kind of set it in front of ourselves as a reminder.
Handy.
And that might help us go forward. So everybody, hold on to your egg timer, and I agree with Councilmember Martin, we should continue this item as long as I have consensus from at least one more person, so Councilmember Lingle can be here.
Am I on the timer?
Yes.
I'll give you consensus on this.
Councilmember Aras, Costa, good with that?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll continue that item, and in the meantime, we have our timers. Thanks to Mrs. Lynn.
The next item is my request, and this will be a discussion of questions for the council regarding Surf Development Corporation and the Santa Barbara County, no, the Housing Authority of Santa Barbara County. And I'm going to open this up for public comment first. Is there anyone who would like to talk to us about this? Come on down.
Okay.
Before I start, I'm sorry, I need to make one announcement. I spoke with Fred Lamont earlier today. He's with the Housing Authority, and the discussion was whether or not he and his staff needed to attend this evening, and I advised them that we were collecting questions to give to them, and that probably these questions would be fairly technical and lengthy, and this wouldn't be the opportunity where they could be easily answered, because anything to do with housing finance is quite complicated.
Yes, it is. But as far as the questions go from the community, I have a copy of the letter from Fred Lamont, and he, pardon me, my name is Pam Wall, still.
We forgot who you were.
Did? I hope so. Anyway, I think he's addressed a lot of the, they weren't even questions, they were innuendos and stuff. At any rate, he addressed those and answered some of these questions that people might have, and this was not attached to the agenda, but I think it would be helpful for people to look at, and it might answer some of the questions they have without dragging this out. I didn't get to bed till one, so ending early would be nice. So if I might pass these out, so they could take a look and see the responses that have already been received?
Surely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I came to speak to this because this all started when I was running for supervisor, and some silly little columnist had to throw mud at me and couldn't figure out how to throw mud, so said, ah, why don't we look at Surf Board, because they do housing, and that way, it would take attention away from LH CDC in the election. And so far, that silly little man and maybe one or two other people are the only ones that seem to be interested in this. And yes, that is how they run campaigns today. This is a cheap way to turn attention away from LH CDC and the millions of missing dollars. Housing Authority of Santa Barbara County chose to locate their administrative offices in Lompoc, one of the few large organizations that have done that. They have ran their programs so well, the city, the county, and the state constantly compliment on their programs. Everything they do is open to public record. They have never been, until this silly little man decided to throw mud, there has never ever been anybody that has criticized or said anything negative. So, and they're one of the few groups that are actually bringing jobs and money into this city. So what a way to, you know, compliment them. Mary Lynn, I don't know why you brought this up. I mean, with all the problems that we see in Lompoc, and there are problems in Lompoc, there's problems of housing, there's problems of lack of jobs, there's problems with attitude, all the problems that we see in Lompoc, you've chosen to focus on the one organization that's actually doing quite well. Somebody just told me that you had made the comment to them that you thought people that were criticizing LH CDC, that it was all part of a liberal conspiracy. You know what? The last time I talked to conservatives, they are as concerned about millions of dollars missing than liberals, and just as much as liberals are. So not only is it not a conspiracy, it's a shame. So this is, it's not lost on anyone, that this is political. This is about the November election. And, you know, the problem is, once you let the dogs out, it's really hard to pull them back in. So I think that you owe the Housing Authority and the Surf Board an apology. I think you need to say to them, thank you for being here, thank you for staying here, thank you for the great job you've done, and then spend maybe this extra time on finding where our millions of dollars are. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me share with you that the alternative to doing this would have been to have a large public meeting where Surf would have been asked, and the Housing Authority would have been asked, a lot of questions that they may not have been prepared to answer. And it seemed to me that contrary to what you're alleging, it was much more fair to collect those questions, give them to the Housing Authority, let them answer the questions and have the time to do it, and provide the information to us, rather than the path that was followed with LH CDC, where we went off in a number of directions, and we've had a great deal of testimony, and we still don't have the answer. So on the contrary, this was designed to give them the opportunity to answer in a very succinct way. Next.
Mr. Mayor?
Ma'am.
I would like to make a statement regarding LH CDC. Since I've been in this council, I have asked the staff information regarding funding and status with LH CDC. The staff has numerous times asked LH CDC for updates, and LH CDC have chosen to do not provide any updates. It has nothing to do with public opinion and asking. There is a process. I really don't know what you are asking of us. I am supposed to give you questions regarding Surf Development. I don't even know what to ask, because I don't know what the problem is. I really do not know what the problem is. If there is a problem, I would like to ask the staff, I would like to ask the legal counsel, to update me on the problem. And then I may have some questions, and I'll gladly share those questions with you, Mr. Mayor. But at this point in time, I don't know what the problem is. What should I ask about? Very different than with LH CDC. When LH CDC had questions that were asked, it had to do with maturity of loans, it had to do with compliance, covenant compliance, and maintenance compliance, it had to do with lots, concrete issues, as stated by contracts. And those questions, I always asked the staff for an answer. The staff tried to provide answers. If they didn't have the answers, they went and asked the organization. The organization didn't come back with the answers. There was no random asking and public testimony, as far as I'm concerned, but what are we doing here? What am I supposed to be asking about? I really don't know. I really don't know what the problem is. So if there is a problem with Surf connection, if there is a problem with Santa Barbara Housing Authority, I would like to have the staff and the legal counsel alert me, and let me know what the problem is, and then maybe I can ask some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess one of the questions that was raised by you repeatedly with regard to LH CDC was the question of audits, and that same question has been raised with regard to this organization. So that's one of the questions that I asked. And my goal here is to not provide more work for our staff, but to let the Housing Authority respond in a timely way and provide us with the information. So we're well-advised.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. And I'm just, I have some documents here, and I'm listening to a member of the audience and to one of our council persons, and many people continue to ask what happened to LH CDC, and why did it happen? Several council meetings prior, I provided a copy of CAPERS reports. I don't know that the people that continue to ask where things are aren't inept at research, I doubt it. So one would have to believe there is some political motivation. I, with a few clicks, can show you many reports that tell where monies went, what they acquired, what the result was. But today, I'm just going to focus on giving you information that'll help you to prevent a recurrence of what happened, and maybe shed some light on whole, on affordable housing in general. The first item I have is, it's called CHODO Toolbox for Home Participating Jurisdictions. CHODO is Community Housing Development Organizations. That is what LH CDC was, that is what Surf Development is, and that is what the Housing Authority with Surf is. This explains monitoring, relationships. It's compiled by many different government agencies. It's not an opinion by any one person, but a collaboration of a multitude of different agencies. I highly recommend, especially now in the absence of a direct CDBG employee, that somebody would review this.
Could you provide a copy to each council member, please? City clerk.
Also, there was also asked what happened. In the CAPERS reports, for those of you who have not read them, it outlines very specifically the process as to how monies are awarded and how monies are received, and it reports to them and provides a monitoring process. I have in my possession, this is for Strategic Plan 207, 210. This is the Santa Barbara, Ernie, Urban County Partnership. This says Housing and Capital Projects Funding Approval Process. Again, with a few clicks of the mouse, this is readily available on the Internet. Also in my possession today, I have Using CDBG Funds for Economic Development Activities: The Process. Again, with a few clicks of the mouse, this is readily available on the Internet. It's public. Here's another part. This was part of what I presented to you previously. It stated the 207, 208 CAPERS. This portion I pulled out is managing the process. It explains citizen participation, coordinated efforts, monitoring, project monitoring, program monitoring, monitoring of the Home Buyers Assistance Program, actions taken to foster and maintain affordable housing, where the monies were gone. For instance, here, it lists all the projects and what resources went where. It lists monitoring of what projects were monitored and the results. This is part of the bigger item that I submitted to you later, but I thought, since I didn't hear any feedback, and everybody wants to know what happened, that I would present this. Okay? That being said, here's additional information that I pulled from HUD's website, and this says, "The purpose, the notice was developed to provide updated guidance for field offices, participating jurisdictions," which is the city of Lompoc, "and nonprofits on community housing development organization requirements and eligible activities." So... So, here's another document. Okay? Here's another document, it says right here, "How often must a participating jurisdiction requalify a nonprofit organization as a community housing development organization?" HUD excerpt. I have the TCAC Tax Allocation worksheets for two new CHODOs that are now in existence, that weren't in existence pre-LHCDC. I have an operating statement from a first-year community housing development organization operational subsidy for one formed in 210. So, basically, review those items, look at that information, because what you're going to find is that there's some conflicting information from what was said in reports. It's really very convoluted, and I think it's in the best interest of the community that we have some type of open communication as to processes and procedures, so that we don't repeat this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we'll close oral communication, we'll come back to the council. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I just wanted to bring up something that I brought up at the last meeting, and that was in regards to a low-income housing workshop or update, or some kind of information session. I think that that would be a great place for us to discuss these kinds of information, to have everybody on the council and in the community on the same page in regards to this issue.
And actually, that's one of the things I asked the Housing Authority if they could provide us, was a discussion of how those things worked, and I think an agendized item when they come back with their responses would be good. Does anyone, does anyone else have any questions they want to pass in besides just? Nope? Okay. So if you would pass that to the city clerk, please. And the city clerk will pass that information on to the Housing Authority. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah. Earlier, somebody mentioned a key word here that I wanted to kind of just talk about here, monitoring. We don't have LHCDC now, but we do have a new CHODO. What are we going to do to monitor this? I guess is what I'm saying here. We obviously had asked for reports before, we'd never got reports, everything had just kind of gone awry. Is it too far-fetched if we were to go ahead and receive a report that addressed CDBG money that's been put into our new CHODO, home funds that are there, contracts that we're bound with right now, covenants that are in place? Because I'll be absolutely honest with you, I pretty much have no idea what we have going on with SURF Development with these. And I know that we have granted money, I don't know if it was just passed through, or if there is anything else going on. So I think in the big thing of monitoring, this is probably something that we may want to look at, early.
I would consider those questions that we'll pass to SURF, if you're okay with that, and to the Housing Authority.
Is this something that staff could generate for us? I mean, it's...
I think it would be easier if they supplied it back to us, because they're deep in the heart of it. And then if we need to add on, if the staff needs to add on to it, that would be fine once they supply us with the information. Councilmember Martner.
Mr. Mayor, I am sorry I disagree. I think the city of Lompoc has an obligation to monitor contracts that they have, whether it's with LHCDC, or SURF, or Santa Barbara Housing, whatever organization is out there that has a contract, that receives city tax monies, state, federal tax monies. There are regulations that says there has to be monitoring going on. Now, Mr. Gonzalez says that those regulations, and he's providing some, you know, copies of some of those regulations, and if I hear what he's saying is that, yes, there is those regulations, and there were issues of interpretation perhaps somewhere, somehow, and the reports that the city wrote were perhaps erroneous or misunderstood, whatever. The point is, that if we are going to give any organization tax dollars, we have an obligation to monitor it. And that obligation falls in the government. It does not fall on the agency, it does not fall on personal council members going and talking to board members, it falls in the government. That's why we have a staff that gets paid, we have legal counsel that enforces laws. That's what is government is about. If we have tax money that we're going to give away, we have to monitor it, and there's got to be a government that does that. So, I think Councilmember Starbuck has absolutely the correct, you know, question to ask the staff. How much money have we given LHCDC? How much money have we given SURF? How much money have we given to whatever organization? What kind of covenants requirements are there? What kind of maintenance requirements are there? Have they paid on their loans? Are they late? Are they compliant? I think those are all fair questions that the staff needs to generate answers to, whether they are for LHCDC, or whether they are for SURF, or Santa Barbara Housing, or whatever other organization that may come up tomorrow, and ask for tax monies. It is only a fair question. Santa Barbara Housing should not be answering those questions, the staff should be answering those questions, because it is their job to answer those questions, because they monitor contracts, and the contracts have certain terms, and those terms have to be obliged with, otherwise why have them? So I think it's simple. I totally concur with Councilmember Starbuck. Let's hear a report from the staff on the status of all the loans that Santa Barbara Housing and SURF have received, and are they compliant? I absolutely would like to make that motion right now.
I'm fine with that. I would really like to give Santa Barbara Housing and SURF the opportunity to answer the questions that I posed to them, and the ones Councilmember Starbuck just posed, and then perhaps we can bring all these things back together at one time. So I think what you're asking for is a list of the loans, whether or not they are compliant with the terms of the loans, both financially and the non-financial terms. Is that what I'm hearing you saying?
Absolutely, and I think the report needs to come from the staff.
Yeah, I don't know how far back our relationships stretch with them, so I'd probably want to have a time limit going back. We have the two current loans for the two ongoing projects, but I'm not familiar with how long ago they were involved in other transactions. Do you have any recollection of that, City Administrator? That's a way out question.
I couldn't answer that with certainty, but you both, you know, both loans for Cypress are the Santa Rita Hills project and the Cypress Court project. Those two came to you this year, and the monies were approved. Beyond that, I can't speak to that with certainty. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Martner, do you want to, do you want to set a time going backwards, because there may be some things that are quite old?
I don't particularly have an interest to go back in time. I am only reacting to what is being presented here, that maybe we need to ask questions and have the Santa Barbara Housing answer. I don't think that's the right process. I think the right process is to have the government agency to give us an update on their loan status, and if they're non-compliant, the same way that they updated us with LHCDC, after we asked for it. Now, with LHCDC, because there were so many loans that went back for so many years, and they were constantly being refinanced, there were many things that were open-ended. If that's the case with Santa Barbara County Housing, I would like to know that. So, how far do we have to go? Whatever is open, needs to be reported. If it is closed, it's closed, it's done. Whatever is open.
Okay.
Whatever there is outstanding money, tax dollars, that are being spent today, I think the public deserves to know whether they're being spent according to the regulations that they signed for.
Part of the problem with that is that many of these tax loans are never due as long as they meet their housing covenants. So, they're not technically due unless they don't make the covenant, and if they don't make the covenant, then the loan is due. So, it actually never goes away for 50 years. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I think we are losing sight here. Mary Lynn, I made a suggestion, and you kind of blew right over it, so I'm going to go back and say it again. I think we need to have a low-income housing workshop, or update, or information session to go over the information in regards to the fundamentals for not only LHCDC, but also for SURF and potential future contracts the city enters into. We need to know what we're talking about, the community needs to know what we're talking about, before we actually get into the details. Now that said, just getting another report, I don't think is going to be helpful. We need to create a policy. What will, the report won't matter if there's no standard that it needs to be held to, and there's no repercussions for not meeting these standards. So for me, it could be a report that, and maybe everything's fine, and it just gets filed away, and we just use staff time, for what? I mean, I wasn't on the council when all the controversy happened with LHCDC. I'm trying to figure out how to ensure that doesn't happen again. For me, that doesn't necessarily mean asking tons of questions. We need to know first what we want the policy to be, if the answers to those questions at that time meet the standards, and if they do not, what are the repercussions in that case? That's my opinion on it. So know what we're talking about with some kind of workshop or information session, establish the policy, then ask all these questions. Thank you.
I'm sorry if you felt I blew past you, because actually, what I was trying to impart was that if we gave them an opportunity to ask the questions, and then they have already offered to come and sit with us and have a discussion, and I think, yeah, I think a workshop on that would be very useful, because it's very complicated. And then at that point, I think we, you're right, we should establish some criteria with regard to how we would enforce things in the future, and not allow what has happened in the past. And at that point, I would, once we've gotten to that point, I would be comfortable with Councilmember Martner's request to have a very long-distance look back on all of the prior transactions. And in the near term, I think I would, I would be comfortable with a report on the two current loans and the compliance with those, because that's the money that is out and ultimately needs to be repaid.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remind this council and the staff that I requested, perhaps over a year ago, that this council discusses a policy to prevent what happened. What was the answer to that? After we get the LHCDC update, we're going to discuss the policy. Okay? So the LHC update is coming on August 7th, and we supposedly are going to have, I assume, because so far, that's what has been on agenda items, that the policy, setting a policy to prevent this horrible thing from happening, is going to happen in conjunction with that update that we have with LHCDC. I believe that's the case. Could you please confirm that, City Administrator?
Councilmember Martner and council, I just want to correct that. The consultant that has been hired to provide a very comprehensive status on LHCDC will be, that report will be on the agenda of August 21st.
I ask my question again. What about the policy? I made a request at the time, it got three votes, that the policy regarding a discussion to generate guidelines, what Councilmember Costa is just asking for, that question that was asked by myself, I got the second and the third, over one year ago, and it still has not come up to the agenda. The answer that I was given, we'll do it when we learn about what happened with LHCDC. We still are learning about what happened with LHCDC. I still don't have a policy on the agenda, even though it was an approved agenda item. So would you please tell me when it's being put on the agenda?
Councilmember Martner and mayor and council, that item is not on the agenda at this time, because the comprehensive report is the first item that we understood you wanted back to you. Now, if you'd like to change that order, that's something that would give direction.
I am sorry to say, but I've been waiting for the policy, I thought that it was going to be done at the same time. Now Councilmember Costa has put something else on the table, and that is that maybe we have a workshop, and that we learn what low-income housing regulations are, and what is really what we're talking about, and perhaps maybe out of that workshop, we become educated, such as that we can discuss and establish a policy.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, real quick, I'm just looking at proposed future city council agenda items, and right here, it's listing city policy for enforcement of contract compliance-dash-update of LHCDC loans. It's a council priority five, and it's scheduled for August 21st, economic and community development council request.
So it says policy. It's not just the update from LHCDC, please, okay?
Mary Lynn, if I could interject, oh, my apologies, City Administrator. I really briefly, I think that the update will be one component of the policy, but as we're looking at SURF, and as we're looking at this additional information, I think what we can do is, you know, make it more comprehensive if we base our policy not just on the update from LHCDC, but on information from all these sources. So it seems like that would be, you know, maybe the initial stages of that policy can start in that same evening, and that we can continue that as we continue the discussion.
I agree. I think that makes good sense. First step on the road, and we will get down the road, absolutely. Starting on the 21st. Councilmember Martner.
Very well. One last comment. Regarding a report for Santa Barbara Housing, I never once said that I wanted to go years and years back, and you made a comment regarding that. All I want from any organization that receives tax dollars is that the staff updates the council and the public on the status of compliances, whether it's Santa Barbara Housing, whether it's LHCDC, whoever it is, it doesn't matter. And there should be, in the regulations, there should be a schedule when those status reports are due to the public. As far as I know, the maintenance reports are due once a year. But shouldn't we have established schedules that we update the public in how our tax dollars are being spent? I think we only deserve that. And I'm sure, if we go and look at the details of the regulation, it will say that they have to be done once a year or six months. I don't know. Okay? So, why is it that we have to ask these questions, and why is it that we have to request this? I believe that the system should be there, such as that this automatically happens, and it is part of the public record to provide the information. So I sure hope that the administration does what the regulation says that they should be doing.
Actually, we do complete that report and file it with the state each year. The name of that report is...
I'm sorry, I don't remember the actual name, but there's actually two annual reports that the staff has done for many years, and it's the reports required by the federal funding, and the reports required by the redevelopment law. They used to do when the Redevelopment Agency, and those reports are brought every year, and the council reviewed those reports and received and filed them.
And the hard copies are on file in the council office in the file cabinet, and I'm challenged to think of the name, but I'll get that, and I will bring the copies out. Okay. City Administrator, are you comfortable with the consensus on this discussion?
I think I need some clarification, exactly what you're asking of staff.
I think what we were saying was that at the forthcoming meeting, when the LHCDC report is presented, we would have a preliminary discussion about some rules going forward, and we would hope that the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority, the Housing, excuse me, the Housing Authority of Santa Barbara County would be able to contribute to that discussion. And they had offered to come and share their information on understanding housing projects, and I think to both Councilmember Martner and Councilmember Costa's point, it's fairly complicated, and rather than take up a council meeting that we could set aside a time to sit down and have them come and educate us... sit down and have them come and educate us a little bit more on it. So I think that, did I get everybody's point in there? Okay. Everybody nod their head up and down?
Just a quick clarification. Was the workshop also on the 21st?
No. That would be at some point in the future. At the 21st, we could give you some guidance and we could go forward from there. Everybody nod your head up and down? Nodding, nodding, nodding. Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Mayor, may I just, and maybe it's only for my edification or clarification. I'm not sure that I heard a consensus of the council to send questions to the Housing Authority. So I would just like to have the record clear as to whether there's a consensus to do that.
We actually had that consensus previously to bring this item forward. But if we don't have three people that'll vote for it, then I think we would need to continue that item also until our next meeting when all five of us are here. Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see at this time that we should be taking questions to the Santa Barbara Housing because I don't understand what questions to ask and what the problem is. So it is not until we have some clarification that there is something that they need to be asked about. I am just going to go along with what the system is. The system requires that they provide reports, they are filed with the state, and that's happening. There hasn't been any red flags raised. At this point in time, I don't know what else to ask. So I don't have any questions to ask until I become more educated and see if there are any issues.
Councilwoman Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. Understanding that if LHCDC would return emails and phone calls, I would want to ask them questions. And understanding that I would want to do that, I actually don't have any questions for SURF at this time. But if you both feel that you have questions that you'd like them to respond to, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
I definitely have questions I would like them to answer to clear up things. I'm comfortable that I probably know the answer to a lot of them, but there's been a lot of discussion in the community and I would rather let them have the opportunity to respond and give answers, close the issue, and go forward. Councilmember Starbuck.
Like I said earlier, I don't have questions directed at SURF, so to speak. If you do, I mean, I feel that it's perfectly your right to address them with them and being that you are the mayor, go through the procedure of mayor. Like I said, my concern is with the monitoring, and that's kind of the all-encompassing. But, you know, I will support your forwarding your questions.
Okay. So we have three to forward the questions. And is there any other discussion on this item? Okay. Seeing none, do we have any written communications for this meeting? Okay. Oral communications, two minutes, your last opportunity to address. I bet you're going to tell us what the name of those two reports are. I couldn't remember.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Longoke. I'm going to do more than that. I'm going to give you a copy of a report that was, it's called "The Midterm Review of the Five-Year Implementation Plan 203-208 Old Town Longoke Redevelopment Project Area." What it is, is a report on the status of projects. I'll read a small excerpt. "It should be well noted that the agency has been diligent about the need to continue to push the production of affordable housing to meet obligations. The 24 units completed during this evaluation period represent a significant increase for the number of affordable units available to the community. The increase in affordable units contributes to the successful efforts of the city and agency to meet and exceed the requirements." And there's a notation here, you'll see that four of the three projects are LHCDC projects. This was the 203 to the 208. It was approved November 4th, 2008, pre-all of you. However, there is another report in existence. It's the 209 to 214, which Councilmember Martner had on the agenda and voted to approve. And that also gives similar information. We need to have a little bit more participation on the council as to actually read some of this paperwork that's being presented. Because I hear a lot of allegations, quite a few suggestions, but there's a lot of conflicts. And I'm not justifying LHCDC here. What I'm trying to do is, for the community's benefit, is find out what is the real core problem. And you can only do that by really looking at everything as a whole. You can't, as some had said before, have one set of standard for one agency and another set of standards for another agency. So if you're going to require audits from one, you require them from all. And there is a process and there's a procedure here. It's outlined by CDBG and it was outlined by RDA. And I'll also give you the reports that were made annually from 201 through 210 for the RDA's projects.
Thank you.
Still, Yedidiah De Vries. I actually wanted to jump back to an earlier conversation where Costa suggested hiring a consultant to look at potential zoning, the general plan and potential zoning. And the mayor suggested looking at other cities, zoning ordinances to get ideas. I wanted to offer two additional ideas because consultants are costly and because looking at other cities might give you some ideas but definitely not all options and doesn't actually establish causality with success. It just tells you what they're doing. And those two ideas, because I come from a social science and public policy background, is one, to look at the academic research in urban planning, even a simple Google Scholar search as a starting point would probably give you quite a lot of ideas, such as about the progression of downtown from empty to office to retail, whether or not that actually works, what other type of zoning ideas might work. And then my second idea is we have a university not far away, Cal Poly, that has an urban planning program, both undergraduate and graduate students who are probably looking for things to write theses on and we might be able to entice some of them to do some research here and to, you know, so that we could both benefit from their work and their ideas. We wouldn't have to implement all of them, but it might be a way to get some new ideas and some new input. Thank you.
Thank you. And the downtown streetscape that we currently are in the midst of was actually a Cal Poly group that came down and helped us with that. So that's a good suggestion. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you for your comments. I do want to say part of what I will be emailing Ms. Brees is actually not just examples of cities, but, you know, the fundamental policies themselves. So I did quite a bit of research today on that and trying to come up with some innovative solutions, not just looking at what we currently have. So I'm trying to do that. I also contacted the UCLA Department of Urban Planning to try to solicit some help. I didn't get any takers, so, you know, maybe we can try Cal Poly as well. So, you know, I'm definitely with you on that. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the agenda items that Councilmember Costa requested a long time ago, which was this council discuss internships for council members. Well, I think this would be a tremendous opportunity to actually try to get some internships in planning. So hello, why don't we get that agenda item next meeting? And we can maybe tie some things together here and get some help from the academia where they're trying to solve problems today, you know, with the economics of today, with life of today. So I am really, you know, excited to see that there is public, we have a council member that, you know, is looking for interns to try to help us get educated. So could we step up that agenda item to discuss potential interns for the council members?
We wouldn't be able to get it on next week or next meeting because we're pretty close, but I think it would be appropriate to put it on with the LHCDC item since we're going to be talking about that subject at that time.
I would like to ask the city administrator, since she is the one that usually sets the agendas, it's not just the mayor. So would you please, as city administrator, comment and tell us when that item could come up?
Sure. Councilmember Martner and mayor and council, we could put together probably just a general feasibility for the agenda of the 21st at the earliest. Is that what you would like me to?
You know, Councilmember Martner, that it means the world to me that you brought that back up. Thank you. It's been up there on my little sticky note for about a year now. So I'm excited that we're discussing it. Now, I do have to say that I've been working on another really large project, and that's the Heal Cities Campaign project. And we've requested that that actually come on the 21st. That's because Representative from Heal will be in the area on that date. So if we could actually attempt to put Heal Cities on the 21st, I would appreciate that. Ms. Gallivan, I know, was given that information by Ms. Taggert and myself. And then put this on the following agenda, that would be very helpful for myself.
Everybody good with that?
Thank you.
And it's a two-part, so maybe you could remake the Heal City and tell us about it, just a snippet so we can put that on for the 21st? Because I don't think anyone is familiar with it.
Heal Cities, we discussed agendizing that item a while back through the Policy Committee that I sit on, through the League of California Cities, the Community Services Policy Committee. We decided as a community that everybody who's represented on that committee would come back to their respective cities and attempt to pass a resolution to become a Heal City. Heal stands for Healthy Eating, Active Living. It's a fully funded campaign by Kaiser Permanente. So I've been working very hard with some community advocates, including the Healthy Longoke Coalition, in attempting to establish a resolution that the city can pass to ensure that there's going to be some policy set toward making Longoke a healthier community.
Perfect. All right. And I, oh, sorry, Councilmember Starbuck.
I don't want to lose sight of the chickens on the agenda. When are we going to do chickens?
Chickens are coming to the Planning Commission tomorrow. They're close.
That was my point.
Yes. Okay. So I still need a nod up and down from three people for Heal Cities for the 21st, and I'm in favor of that. And so we have four. Okay. Got that. And interns on September, whatever it is, first September meeting. Okay. And are there anyone, is there anyone else to speak? Nope. Okay. Are there any other council committee and meeting reports that any council member needs to make? Nope. Okay. Got that done. Just in a general sense, I'm going backpacking Thursday, so if you try to call me or send me an email, you won't get a response for a week. And I'll be thinking of all of you sitting on top of the mountains. And we are adjourned to the council meeting at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, August 7th.